Yeah, I'm just gonna log in. Actually, can I sport it to court?
Yeah. All right. Be working.
All right.
But is the volume working?
I did.
Hello?
Yeah?
Somebody said hi.
Okay, good. Who said hi?
I think it's White.
All right, so.
We're gonna hear about chess.
G-Je, J-Je, Courtney, Vika, and Herb Maine from the Finance Committee.
Okay.
All right, so we are gonna get started.
And we have the owl going through.
Yeah, yeah, and we have the owl going.
Okay, also Nancy's probably gonna join us on Zoom as well.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And Mary, and Mary trains on as well. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Anne sent us a digital packet. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 5?
Motion to approve?
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Great, oops, okay. And next, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve. Yeah.
G-Je, second by J-Je, all in favor? Public comment? Any correspondence, Anne?
Um, not that, not that I have, no, I don't have any.
Me either. Um, okay. Report from me, it's kind of all stuck in the agenda, so we'll just wait till the items. I don't have anything outside the items.
Um, my reported school hop in, the kids are going to off-island to different events. We're gearing up for Scootick, and we'll probably hear more about that from, from Mary. We are getting ready to do parent-teacher conferences next. Yeah, within the next couple of weeks, and then we will be on vacation for a week. Things are, things are moving right, moving right on in the, in the office. I don't know if there's any questions that you folks have for me?
Not at this time. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mary, do you have a report to give us?
Um, I don't have much more than what Anne was saying. We did our Irish culture study and invited the community in and the families. That was a lot of fun last week. And we went to the ballet, we're heading to the planetarium. She's, as she said, we're gonna be doing an off-island three-day full-school field trip to Scootick with other islands coming up in May.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
So, it's the Island Institute, and the sponsored by the Island Institute. And it's part of the teacher collaborative, and they host two event, two field trips each year for all of the islands that are participating in the TLC, one in the fall and one in the spring. We attended one day in the fall, but the other islands were there for three. And we decided that we were ready to try for free, and we've gotten a really positive response from parents. And they are planning some amazing activities and things to keep us all busy, prepaid to adults and parents and teachers for, for three days. So, looking forward to that, that will be a big adventure for all of us. And then we are in the process of planning our fourth and fifth grade end year traditional field trip. We'll be going to Boston this year because it's a big year around the study of early United States history, in particular the Revolution. So, we are maybe doing some historical things, so I'll be sending vote for those two things. Permission to the school committee to actually have them happen, because they're overnights. So I know that they need to be approved by you, so I will get you more information about that. And then what else is like Anne said, we're working on scheduling parent-teacher conferences. We are working on individual projects for our workshop day, a lot around assessment and just the types of assessments, and some science of reading curriculum, looking at some different courses that Heidi and I might take that are offered, that we know some other districts are doing. It's nothing like, it's not a formal college course, it's just for summer. So yeah, we're busy.
Okay, awesome. Anyone have anything for Mary or Anne? Right now? So let's go on to some old business. First thing is the school sustainability. So last Wednesday, we had the community forum, which I believe was extremely well-attended. We had about 50 people there. We had parents as well, and the general consensus was that the community was very in favor of supporting us and us trying to get off-island students. So we, you know, we're gonna start moving full steam ahead with that. We're still waiting back to hear from the lawyers in terms of where our policies stand. Mary did have a family that came out on Monday for a potential kindergartner as well as a real, correct, that would be looking to be at the kid's place and then eventually age into our school. Something that Mary has brought to my attention is, yeah, which we kind of, I kind of touched base on at one point, is thinking about this first year as more of a pilot program. Meaning, we've got a lot of kinks to work out, we've got, you know, things are not gonna be as smooth, and thinking about lessening the initial tuition for this year because of it's the first year. So I don't know how you guys feel about that. So instead of being $9,000, maybe being $6,000, because it's a pilot year. And her thought process, and a thought process that I believe in, is that if we can get some families that do come over, the word is gonna start spreading, and then, you know, our, our reputation can speak for itself. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but I know that as we start moving forward, us as a board need to kind of figure out what those hard not, numbers are, so that when people do inquire, we, we have, you know, correct numbers that we can provide for them.
So it's a change in how much, from what to what?
So it'd be $3,000 less.
$3,000 less. And how many students were we at that day?
There'd be one student.
Just one student?
That, that has come forward and toward the school, the whole family came out. Again, it's, it's more that this one year would be kind of a pilot program, meaning it's our first time doing this, it's, you know, their first time doing this, they don't really know what to expect. We also don't really know what to expect. We don't know things that we can do better, we don't know things that we're doing well. You know, they still.
I agree with everything you've been saying, I'm just wondering about it. So if there are three more families that all of a sudden decide to send their kids, that we could keep it free for everyone? Or just as one?
No, it would be for everyone, for just this year, and then we would go based upon the 279.
So, just two things on the whole thing. First, like I was gonna write an email, but I thought it'd be better public. Because I just wanna, I think we should acknowledge and say huge thank you to Elizabeth, because you took that meeting on for all of us. Like, I know I put in a term that, the reception from the community was really good. They said, you know, the information provided, and you just kind of helped really push forward for them. I don't think we'd be in this position if we didn't have you kind of like leading the charge. And then also a thank you to the teachers, because I know that they also have been really instrumental in what people said. From the vote in the morning, people were really impressed, you know, to hear from the teachers. So I just, I think like that needs to be acknowledged, you know, from us. And then my only question in regards to, so thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
And then my only piece is, as, you know, with kids here, I know, like a kid could be here for a year and just be like, this isn't for me, right? You know, I'd hate if we had like turnover, and I, I worry with such a gap in the tuition that would we detract, like people are like, oh, it's worth it for this price, but gosh, going up $3,000. Like, don't, don't think we're gonna come back next year. So I just like want them to understand the financial commitment that it would be for years after, too, versus, you know. Like, I'd like them to not come back, because like it's not gonna fit, versus not coming back for financial reasons. And then we get in this pickle of like, we really like this kid and we wanna keep him. Like, maybe we don't raise the tuition, you know what I mean?
We're, we're gonna.
Yeah, oh, oh, hi.
Am I allowed to add to that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so one of the things that I'm getting feedback about in terms of talking to parents is that they are feeling that, if parents considering coming out, they don't really know what they're buying. Do you know what I mean? Like, we don't have and, and what, what I, one particular comment I got was, well, I could send my child on the mainland to private school for that cost, and this is gonna be a big logistical, you know, risk for us as a family, and so I think there are things that are very attractive about the school, but until we have some success, I think the tuition is going to be a barrier. And so if we don't have, if we were able to get a few families to commit to trying it out and flush it out with us, like, we don't even have answers for them when they come yet, really like, what would it look like? What's the boat gonna look like? Like, we have a lot to work out as a system in terms of accepting mainland students. And I think that it's, it would be very brave of these families to take, to take that on. So I, I get concerned about, I do, I totally respect the need for tuition. Obviously, I ran a program where I was charging tuition. I think it's just gonna be a tricky way, it's just gonna be tricky getting started. And, but once we get started, I think people will, will be able to see that it's viable, that it is, it's okay and it's safe, because these kids are young, that we're asking to come out. And that's just a big commitment for families, or at least they see it as that. The transportation piece is a big, I keep hearing feedback about that, the boat versus a bus, and so anyway, that's just my two cents, that I think we need to get some traction by actually having some families do this before we charge too much money for it.
I think from my perspective, I mean, the agenda item says it's all, says it all, it's, it's school sustainability. It's not how to develop a windfall profit for CIS. It's about the sustainability, it's about what's good for the students that are here, as far as social interactions. So, I mean, it, it would be different if we had to add another like ed tech position or something like that, which at this point, I don't think we do. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think we have to charge some tuition to justify it to, you know, tax base and all that. But I think that, you know, this $1,000 number for this year is, is fine if that gets kids in the school.
My, my comment kind of piggybacking on that, Jeff, is you know, the, the school is not established outside the island, and so to, to have people come over is, it's, like you said, you don't know what to, they don't know what to buy. And, and until you have a, a year or two under the belt with the establishing it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to charge any, any amount of money.
For example, the family that came to visit, they've been begging us to be able to come, you know, through this whole process since they, we had their older child, Heidi and I, but the tuition is, would be a deal breaker for them. So we don't want, we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot it by making it hard for people that really, really, really wanna do it and are willing to take the risk. That, that's just my, that's just my thinking, I'm just worried we won't get kids.
So, I mean, what do we feel like the general consensus is? Are you guys okay with saying?
Yes.
And then vote fair, so that the family would also be in charge of vote fair as well. And, you know, I think we still need to work that out with CTC, whether we purchase that with our group of, you know, we just consider that one of our student rates, and then the family just, you know, with their tuition pays that. So, you know, that logistical type stuff that that will have to keep working out.
Five-year-olds, right? They don't get charged, right?
Yeah, they don't. Okay, so we'll keep it at that, so if anyone asks, we'll say $6,000. And again, to reiterate what Mary says, I think that if we can get traction, we can get an established reputation, I think, you know, what we wanna charge, eventually we'll get there. But for this initial process where we're still working on all the kinks, you know, I think it's a good place to start, we can vote one there. Okay?
That was good.
All right. Anyone else have anything to add before we move on? Okay, next is the superintendent search, so we had a candidate come out today, was here on the 10:00 vote. It went through a quick tour, went to the town office, met the town office staff, spent quite a bit of time with teachers individually, as well as some students, and then went back on the 2:00 vote. Yeah, that's all I got for it. We're gonna be moving through the process. Okay? Anyone have any questions about that? No, no? Okay. So let's move on to the budget. Anne, thank you for putting in the more accurate year-to-date numbers. I know, I appreciated that.
So what's done, what I've done with the budget that I've handed to folks, the blue is the year-to-date. And the last column is developing FY '25 with March changes. Those are the changes that I put in from our last meeting, and, and I also sent a sheet that had all of that information with, with it. I do have, I do have some comments on, on it. One of the, one of my concerns, and I'll just put it at, at concerns, is moving the ed tech salary 100% into the regular ed. We had it split, I had it split, and you both asked me to move it all back into the regular. In doing so, that would, that would eliminate the ed tech from working with any special ed students. And in the event that we get a young student that may need one-on-one, that would, that should not be available to work with, with that student.
And also, would it also affect our special ed funding, like if we have a certain amount that we spend on special ed?
Um, no.
No.
No, we, we, the, the amount that, we get about $10,000 reimbursed through, through special ed, and we've always written that grant to, to be reimbursed on people, on, on staff. And so we used it last year on Anya, because she was the only one that, that we had. And then, and in the past, we, we've used it on the, on the ed tech. And that's, that's one of the functions that Heather comes down and, and works with, the town office pulling all those time cards, and then sending them to the state for the, for the reimbursement, or the pull-down of that one.
So my, the reason that I talked about special ed at the last meeting wasn't, I, I guess I didn't necessarily care whether the ed tech and regular instruction and the ed tech and special ed were separated or combined. Bottom line is, we're gonna spend that much money on the ed tech. So moving that number doesn't affect our budget, it just affects the special ed section. My bigger concern about the special ed section was the, or I guess question, I guess, is whether we feel we need a full-time special ed teacher, or if we could get back to the 60% special ed teacher where we were at when Anya was here. So that was my goal, and that, I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me where the ed tech, how the ed tech salaries split or, or not split.
Current, then I think Mary Train can answer this a lot, a lot better. Currently, our special ed teacher is in the building every day, you know, except for Fridays, from 9 to, 2 to 2:30. And does most of the paperwork, but does not do much of the case management, and that is left to Judy, who shouldn't be doing it, the teacher should be, the teacher should be doing it. Also, we have a, we have a meeting next week that, that may adjust the amount of time the teacher's going to be needing in the special ed institution. So that, so, you know, I, I, I agree with Jeffrey, but I think that we, we need to just hold off a little bit longer until we have more information on on some possibilities for next year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that sounds good, I mean, if it's like, you know, extra help in the form of like a breakout session with a one-on-one or whatever, if there's a way to do that with the teachers that we have on staff now, and still meet the needs of the students, then, you know, that might be more efficient as far as budget goes.
Well, yeah, and we'll, we'll know that a little bit more after, oh, actually, in two, in two weeks, or after the first weekend in April. Oh, we do have a, we are interviewing a teacher next Tuesday night for next year.
Anyone have anything else about regular instruction or special ed? Feel free to.
I have a question. So my question is, I noticed on the budget that the, the COLA increase is at 5% this year, and I'm just curious what, how that percentage was determined, and where that number came from.
I noted that.
It is, it is 4%. It might look more because, because of the hours, if you look at your first, the school committee members, if you look at your first worksheet, you'll see, you'll see I really defined the hours, and the contracts will, will report that. And, and I, and I use 4%. Just, my rationale for the 4% is how far behind in the, in the COLA increases we've been over the past five years.
So are you saying that the comments that you have in here, say, 3 at 5%, and 5%, those numbers are, the comments are inaccurate?
I don't, because I don't know what you're looking at.
That the 8305 on it?
So, what, what, what you emailed, yeah, so for example, is under regular instruction, 8,8305. Or no, that's not.
That's the health insurance.
Special ed, uh, special ed transportation, I guess, is the, so the 5% is not the COLA increase, that's just, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the, the comment that you have, for example, under special ed, 8517, there's 5% there. So that's not.
It's 85, it's 85, 18 middle school tuition, and I was told by Yarmen that, that that tuition is going up 5% for this, for special ed.
I had that, I had the question. Are we just on regular and specialist?
Nope.
Okay.
Feel free.
Because I was also looking at, for, under superintendent, the secretary salaries were like an increase of the sorry, I have like both.
If you, if you look at the worksheet that I, that I gave you, I spelled out the, the days that the, that the secretary would, would have. And I don't have my sheet right in front of me, but it's, it's like two, two full days in July, working with the new superintendent. And then a week before school starts, getting, getting some, some ready. I know that there's a lot of paperwork and, and getting everybody up to speed in order to be ready on the, on the first day that the secretary is, is responsible for. So there's a, so there's a full week before, before school starts, and then there's just the days that the students are there, and then the holidays that fall within the school year, plus five vacation days.
But would it still be a 5% increase if, because that's a reduced amount of summer time, right? Because the secretary, administrative secretary, used to be two days a week in July and all of August, or two and a half days?
I gotta pull up my sheet.
She sent it on the page.
I kept pulling up so that we're all talking about the same thing. So one of the things that you folks asked me to do was look at this, at the secretary's secretary's salary and change it to $20 per hour. So that's what I did. And I have July 2nd. July, two and a half days to work with the superintendent, or sorry, July, August, six days, three before the teacher workshop days, and then when the full staff is there, set up the school year on the state site, get the packages together, get information from the teachers and to the parents. And then, that'd be six days, September through June, all the student days, that's 175. After school is out, all the state reporting that has to get done. That's another five days, working with the superintendent and getting those done. Secretary has to get them done, and then the superintendent has to approve them. And that's the same with the kitchen stuff and the special ed form too as well. Twelve holidays, five vacation days, for a total of 204 days, seven and a half hours per day. And multiply that out, and that's what I got. And that was 15,300, split between two lines. And I'm going to guess that that was more than, more than 5% of an increase. But there is that state law that they're, that they're looking at, so that people in that position are above the state minimum wage.
Anyone have anything else?
And then the health insurance is, I noticed it's under superintendent office and principal office. So did you put the secretary health insurance under one and superintendent under another?
No.
Okay.
They're, oh. Actually, yes, I, yes, I did, because because I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna mess with fractions. And so right now, the superintendent is, right now, the superintendent and the secretary and the principal and the secretary, those, they're two policies. And they're split between those two lines. So it's really just one policy is here and the other policy is here. And so I just kept it that way, just for ease of numbers.
And I just have kind of one more question. So we have in the budget 2,000 for conferences and training. And it looks like we really never spend that. And this year, we've only spent 254. So I'm just curious, do we need 2,000 in the budget for our superintendent for conference and training?
Yeah, at the end, there are two conferences. And since I was there, I didn't attend them, but they are very well worth it. And one of them is in October, and that's in Augusta. And the other one is the, well, the commissioners conference, and that's at the end of June. And they are... They're about the only professional development that, well, there's another one in January that the superintendent would, would, wouldn't, should go to. It just didn't, I attended them, I attended each of, the October one and the January one once. And I think I've attended the June conference every time it was available. It wasn't available during COVID.
Are you saying we should cut that?
I mean, if the superintendent, new superintendent would think that they should attend, you know, card to card, that I could keep that, that's what they possibly...
On the budget in general, or? Yeah, so I mean, I guess we went line by line. You know, at the last meeting, in depth, pretty well, but we kind of skimmed over the rec center line. We had, at the last meeting, had met with Steve and Jenny, and they said they were not going to request anything from the school. We left that $2,500 number in there. I'm wondering if, yeah, I'm wondering if we just plain don't need anything in there at this point. And also, I think they met with the school last, sorry, with the town last night. I didn't know if there's anything more that we need to know about there.
What the town has, at this point, what the board has agreed is to keep it as they requested, which the request was 59,500 for the rec center and $20,000 for Kids Place, or $30,000 for Chuck. And so they, the board agreed to keep it at what was asked with an understanding that it's not necessarily final and maybe some discussion from the MOU, a discussion next week could change that. But there was a strong support in, one board member wanted to move some money from the rec center to Kids Place to try to have a heavier support for the early education and have kind of more say where that money is distributed. But the board decided not to move that because their, Eliza Kane-Adams was the only person in the crowd who was there, who has connections to the rec center. So they didn't want to make those decisions without rec center's input or rec center being aware of it, so.
All right. So I mean, I guess based on what they pulled us at the last meeting, there's no guarantee to fund that line.
Yeah, I would take it out and, yeah, unless it drastically changes after that meeting on Thursday.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it's 8609. And, Anne, thank you for reaching out to Scott Poole and about the SAD 51 debt from the worksheet that he sent, that $107,000 is accurate. Our valuation is lower than I had expected it to be compared to the other two pounds, so.
Yeah, after the meeting last time, I emailed him and just said, "Need to see your, show me your work." And then he sent that back, and I saw you getting up to the board.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I would say keep that of what he said, based on the worksheet that he sent. That was, I don't want that line hurt, sorry.
It's the 800 from the last four.
Yeah, right, yeah, there it was.
Eight thousand something. The one you're selling. So then should that be like even less than next year?
Yeah, it'll be, should be substantially less next year, because next year is their, the last payment, and it's only a partial payment.
Yes.
Hope to be on the school committee still, and I see that line, I'd have your help.
We'll be here.
Be so happy, Dan, Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Do you, Jeff, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? You'll be okay. So from the town end, I just want to say thank you for distributing this information to me after the last meeting, last night at the budget discussion. I think it made it a lot easier for the board, because what I did is I plugged your draft numbers into the total budget, and it really helped the board kind of see the bigger picture. And so having that information sooner than later, I think, just made things a lot easier for the total number. So if it's possible, if, as you guys go through this process, just to have the superintendent pass it on to me, so I can keep plugging it in, so the whole budget can, can kind of move together, understanding that it's all work in progress until it's final, that, that's, I think, is very helpful. So thank you.
Yeah, your worksheet was fabulous. It was, I appreciated that as well. So it was great, great, good work in progress.
So are we moving, I just want to make sure we're, are we moving part of that ed tech salary back to special ed so that we can't, we don't limit ourselves, Anne?
Yeah, I'm fine with splitting that back between regular and special.
Oh, while you were talking, I didn't hear you. But, yeah, so I guess I'll have you move that back. And then I guess the only other change, right, is removing that rec center number. So once you make those two changes, you know, just mine forwarding that on to VICA. Because the next time we're going to meet, we're going to meet with the board of selectmen on people. That's our, that's our joint meeting.
Yeah, and are we going to meet on the second as well?
We're going to talk about that at the end of the meeting, but I guess we can talk about that now.
Because we might have, we might have, maybe not. You know, there are just a couple more numbers that just, I'm just kind of waiting on, on meetings to happen, because I can't, I can't really make decisions without having the meetings. And the meetings are going to start taking place. So we'll, we'll be able to really firm up the, it's just a couple more numbers that we have to firm up, and I'm looking forward to that. And they're all under the special ed category.
Yeah, Courtney. Just real quick, like 8701. I can't, I don't see in our notes, but why is that a 10%, 10 and a half percent increase?
Because I added, I added four days when they take the bus, when he takes the bus down.
Oh, that's right, okay. And when he takes the bus down, do you mean like in the summer? Or do you mean like the days we don't have school, like the school bus? Because wouldn't that be still a day he's working here?
No, he, he takes it down, he's already scheduled it for the beginning of August. And so he's not working those days. And then he takes it also in February, during February break, and he's not working on those days, aren't he?
Got you. And then... Anne, are those meetings that you're talking about, will they all be taking place prior to April 2nd?
No, not prior to.
So, you know, when we meet with the board, we'll just let them know that, that some meetings needed to be had that in the special ed. And if you could just have maybe some rough num, not put them in our budget, but just have some rough numbers, so that when we go, they, you know, you can say it's going to be an increase of potentially X versus Y, and so that they know that what they're looking at.
Yes, I'll have that.
All right. Anyone have anything else?
Elizabeth, would it be appropriate for me to say a few words about what my committee's doing?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
You guys aware that the town formed an ad hoc finance committee? It's Courtney and Courtney Wilson, Phil Kenzie and myself, and Carol's participating in that. We've been, the goal is to look at other towns and our own history and see if it might be worth putting together a standing finance committee, a separate committee of people, like a lot of towns have, or they even have, and what that might look like in our town. So that's what we've been doing. We're going to, on the 27th, we're going to, April 27th, we're going to give sort of a public presentation of what we found, and we may have recommendations for the board of selectmen that they may or may not bring to the annual town meetings and say, "We want to form a standing committee," and if there's new ordinance, they may want to do it more informally for the first year or something like that. So nothing's set in sand. We're just doing research, trying to bring it back to the board about what the process could look like, what a, what a finance committee could bring to the process. There's, it's pretty clear that most, in most places, it's an advisory board. So the board is just like another set of eyes on the budget as you're moving forward. And in many places, they're also taking capital planning on. And we haven't done, we haven't been able to do much of that with the band that we have in the town. So that would be something that this, this committee might, might do. If the school is interested in participating in that at any level, a lot of towns will send the superintendent to this finance committee meeting and some of the faces to just to keep the whole town in, you know, in lockstep. We'd be happy to hear any input you have. We'd be happy to participate any way and align participate in any way that you want to in the process. So that's all I have. Once you have questions, we can fight comments specifically from the school committee.
How, do you have your comments specifically from the school committee? Any comments specifically for the school committee or the school budget?
Us to, right now?
Yes.
We're not looking at the budgets this year.
Oh, okay.
We're looking at, we're looking at the process of how we do the budgets, which is why I'm here tonight. I'm looking, I'm not, I don't care so much about the numbers. I care about the process, what you're saying, what you've talked about, ask, the fact that we want them line by line, those are the things that I came into looking at the process and how it, how it works and how an outside set of eyes in the town might assist that or get in the way. So that's kind of, that's kind of my interest in even what we're talking about. So if there are any, especially, you didn't bother with capital items and capital planning, and I don't know what you're doing with your capital planning, that would be of interest to us, for example, what your conversations are around that. But that would be of interest to... But that would be of interest to us and it's what we're we're looking at right now. We'd be talking to the board selection. And that sort of thing. So we're just our task, we're the ad hoc committee, our term is done at annual town meeting. We're trying to say, give recommendations about what a separate body, what pros and cons are at what it might look like in town and then let the board selection decide what they want on the municipal side and offer you those kinds of services.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else on the budget? Yes.
What was the rationale behind the eight, six, one, three electricity line? That if we're only spending a minimal amount, that would still budgeting for a what would normally be a full amount?
I can help answer that. So there's the last year plus, there has been a large discrepancy between CMP and provision. And so the way that the process worked with the solar panels, we we get essentially built from both. And we have to do manual journal entries to account for that, but there are there's the numbers aren't aligning. And so we've been pretty much in a battle with both companies trying to figure out because CMP changed their system. It's it's so very different. So now all of the electricity is really going under one line, but we need to journal entry it. So at the last meeting when this came up, I suggested that the board not touch that and support the recommended number that Anne has in there because the expense is there. It's just not being shown in that particular account because we're not able to fix the discrepancy.
So it's some, but that's something you're working on and at some point, hopefully, maybe by next budget time, we'll be able to
It it needs to be done before the end of this budget process.
Maybe we will be able to correct that on whether.
It it probably won't change by much.
Really? So even and that's just for a period of time and then once we get past that that period with that inflation company or whatever the the other company is, then those costs disappear, correct?
So what the there is the option to buy out the contract right now for the solar panels that came to the town. The town, the board asked the climate action team to take a look at it to have or to provide a recommendation whether it's beneficial for the town to buy it out now or wait. And so that question can't really be thoroughly answered until that time comes, which most likely is probably going to be next year's budget schedule.
Thank you for giving that question because.
This is just a small thing. Under eighty five, one, seven. When we're like, usually when we cut out a number, don't we put like down the percentage? Right? So like year to, oh, we didn't budget anything. So we didn't budget anything for eighty five, one, seven?
No.
But we've spent that. So we don't need to budget anything for next year?
No, no, we don't. That's that is a specialized transportation and we don't if they're getting if they're over on the mainland, grade six through twelve, needing any type of special transportation for special ed services, we do not pay to them. Our tuition, the tuition, the tuition to Yarmouth pays for it. But you see that in in yellow? That's those are areas that Vika and I need to get together and and just make sure that that they're in the right column or rename the column. Rename the look the line.
All right, anything else?
Just one, just one more, one more thing. I know that we usually, we usually don't get our health insurance increased what they what they tell us until they actually they're we're at we're at their mercy. When I talked to them regarding my own retirement health insurance, they indicated that we usually don't go up much more than than in pool and the pool is three percent. That's why I backed it down from ten to five. I hope it's my hope that when we get our letter that we can back it five down to three, but I'm not going to do that until we actually get that letter. And that letter usually comes both to me and to Vika at the same time.
Which my health insurance only went up three percent.
Nice. Good clarifying question. Going back to the eighty five, one, seven, right? Was that the specialized transportation?
Yeah, yeah.
So year to date, what the town has is that they've spent twenty nine thousand for that line item. So I don't know if whatever is coming to the town has the wrong account number on it, but what we have, the line, Special Ed Transportation eighty five, one, seven, twenty twenty four budget had zero dollars. Year to date, it's a twenty nine thousand with nothing being you know, put in for next year. So going into what Anne just said, as far as getting together with us, whatever is being put on the bills, that's what we're putting in under those line items. And so if line items have been changed in in this pool to represent something different, that's not how it's going to appear at town meeting. And so that's something that would be very helpful if we could sit down and and make those changes sooner than later. Because according to what it's saying now, the school has spent nearly thirty thousand dollars under that line item.
Yeah, I I have a sneaking suspicion. I know where where that go where that goes and we can we can chat about that.
Do you guys think you can get together before that April ninth meeting? That is doable? Great. All right, if no one has anything else, Anne, like I said, let's just make those few couple of changes. We'll send it to VICA and that will kind of be our draft for the selectmen for our April ninth meeting and then just having those numbers to say that the specialized department may move slightly based upon those meetings.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. All right. So if no one has anything else about the budget, let's move on to the school calendar for next year. Anne, you were able to speak to the teachers about
Yeah.
Eight days, professional development days.
Yeah. So you look at the, and I sent that one to you as well. If you look at August and September, the Island Institute does two days and next year they're going to be August ninth, nineteenth and twentieth. And both Mary and Heidi go go to those. So I really recommend that we count those as two of their professional development days. And then they'll have three with the new superintendent along with the rest of the staff. Then they'll keep the October eleventh professional development with the rest of the state and all the teachers. They'll have a flex day on November twenty seventh due to parent teacher conferences. They'll have another flex day on April eighteenth after the second set of parent teacher conferences. And that would take care of their eight in service, their eight professional development slash in service days. And on the last day of school is the last day of school and they would not have another one at eighteen seventy ten.
For full-time teachers, a special ed teacher, it sounds perfect for Mary and Heidi, but does the specialized teacher need to have eight professional days and how would they get that?
We might it would all depend on what their what their contract said. There there we might need to modify the the contract. And if it's not a full time, then then we would we would modify. Also, if they they needed to do professional development days, we would we would count those also as their as their professional development days. That was a very good question, Courtney. Didn't think about that one.
Well, I just wonder if like you could do like a new teacher training on like the twenty sixth, you know, like if they could get their you know, going to the town, getting like all that type of stuff done as maybe that could be one of the days. For just that, for our new teacher.
Yes. And then we could build one, yeah, we could build one in maybe at the at the end as well for the for the new teacher.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this calendar for next year, the twenty four, twenty five school calendar?
Sorry, just one one more question is, so does the the student days here mirror Yarmouth's calendar?
I believe so. I can double, I can double check it.
Have they approved their calendar for next year?
They had, they had a draft. And we we went off their draft. We usually don't. We usually don't. So so it's very hard from from that. Perfect. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And they took down, Courtney.
I have two formatting things. One is this proposal at the bottom says adopted by school committee three, twenty one, twenty twenty three. I don't know whether that was a a repeat from then, excuse me, on the information underneath March. Just take, excuse me, take everything away because it's confusing. If there's says March, no school teacher workshop day. You see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Just take that lingo out. And then once those are done, just make sure when it formats that it's only one page so that if it goes into the hopper, it doesn't generate extra pages.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five calendar.
I move to approve calendar.
All right, that's what I did.
Oh, sorry. Second.
Second, Anne, you have the second.
Any other discussion? Call in favor.
That's what I meant to do.
It's been a long afternoon.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move on to buildings and grounds. I just wanted to start having this conversation, kind of Nancy kind of drafted an email to Anne about kind of some outdoor things that need to be done in addition to kind of going into what Jeff brought up last time with the town's possible request to have the bus house here versus you know, at the town office. And then lastly, I kind of wanted to just tie that in also to the the mowing and the the maintenance of of our grounds. So I didn't know what you guys thought about. You know, we're having a a meeting next week with the rec, the town of board of selectmen, so hopefully we can get a little more answer about the mowing. But in terms of, you know, the bus being housed here, does anyone have any thoughts on where that should be? That sort of thing.
Where the bus should be here, up in property?
The town is is asking if the bus can be housed here when not in use versus at their hometown office.
I would say the town to NASA. I had a member of the facilities committee ask me if we would discuss it. Just because they're renovating and actually change that there or whatever.
I don't see why it would would be a problem.
I think the only place would be in the summer.
Yeah, right. Give a lot of camps and
I just I just don't know where it would go personally.
So I have I have a couple, I have just a couple thoughts on on that. If it were to be housed up here, I would suggest that it gets housed, you know, on the either on the side of the building by the by the office or just right, right in, it's got to be in plain view. The the just ask a couple of questions. Why? Why does it have a town office in the first place? Number one, they they plug it in. We're going to just take the regular extension cord. And the other thing, the other reason why the the current bus driver likes it there is if there's ever any power outages or pretty often, he can actually just walk up to the town office and and give it to the bus and drive it. Not, you know, not have to worry about getting in his own car and and going to it. That's that was his suggestion. But this isn't the first time that the staff has, we did last year, we chatted about why why is it at the town office and not up here? And for safety purposes and and evacuation, it would it would make sense to be at the school.
So all we need, all we need to be able to do is be able to plug the bus in with a regular extension cord? There's no other outlets or?
You know, like a like a dryer outlet thing, no?
Yeah.
The only only thing I can think of that maybe initially keeping it here is some kind of fire restriction, you know, if it's parked on the side here, on the side, whether they, the fire department might have an issue with not having complete access to the line. I mean, I still think there's room where it could be put where that wouldn't be an issue.
I wonder.
It does make sense having it up there.
At the town hall.
No, have it here.
Yeah.
School property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder in the summer, just because there's many times when most if not all of the spots are consumed, whether in the summer it could be at the town garage someplace, I mean, that there is space there. And there are people that come and go there. So it's, it does have eyes on it. I think during the school year, it makes sense to have it here at school. We just have to look at where we can have it. And if the if there's a fire and the fire truck, I mean, the school bus is plugged in, it's not hard to unplug it if there's a cord that runs across, but there are a lot of people that drive that circle. It'll be, might have to do an overhead line or something. I don't know.
Okay.
Run it through a conduit that's already there over to the pole. Might be a spare conduit.
All right. Well, I just wanted to kind of start the conversation, you know, we'll just keep it the way it is for the rest of the school year, but something to think about going forward in next year's school year.
There's part in mowing. Has there been any movement forward with any of the contractors?
I know Anne said that correct me if I'm wrong, but Janara would mow the field. We just don't.
He would grow, he would mow around the around the school like he did last year and these And he's looking into. What it would take for him to mow the, mow the field. And he hasn't gotten back to me, but I will, I'll send him another, you know, tomorrow.
So would he, if it is Janara, would he be doing it as an employee or as a subcontractor?
He, he is insured, so he can do it as a subcontractor.
But he's a town employee. So in the past, for like the floors and stuff, we pay him as a town employee, right?
I would pay him as a subcontractor. And we paid him lunch during the long as a subcontractor. Cause he has his own liability insurance.
So that memorandum of understanding meeting with the rec that Vika mentioned earlier is next week. Is there anything about the ball field or whatever that the school committee wants me to bring up for the rec center at that meeting?
Well, I think it's just the ongoing comment that it is town property. And that, you know, for the longest time, we've been able to contract with someone to do it. And now we're having a hard time finding someone to do it and that we, you know, are, are needing some assistance with that. I mean, as.
From the rec center or from the town?
I, I mean, as a school, we do not use the field in the summertime. The rec primarily uses it. So I don't know if, you know, we do some of that. I don't know if the town takes it over. But there needs to be a discussion about that because as a school committee, we got a. Pretty significant amount of community complaints about how the field was maintained last year. And so I just would like to try when we make that.
Regarding the field, is there, other than the mowing, is there?
Weed racking.
To water and, yeah, is the, is the irrigation system still working?
So from my understanding with Carol, that it's still working. We have not used it in probably two years. Due to the PFAS issue that we've been dealing with. So her thought was, let's not have the PFAS go out into the water. The irrigation system comes from the rec. So the rec, I don't know where they are and their. Where they are with fixing their PFAS. Issue. So that's something else that is brought up.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, they had any suggestions or thoughts in regards to mowing? And then I think the things we got a couple of years ago too, though, was that it was in regards to the watering of it. Because it was so dry and there was all those bugs because it was so dry. I just, it was before the PFAS. So I just, yeah.
And last year we had a rainstorm, yeah.
So are we still on the building and grounds? Uh, so this doesn't deal with the ball field, okay? But I'm curious about, is there any type of. Maintenance schedule for the playground equipment? We have a sense of like when something goes wrong or potentially could go wrong. We have anyone that's keeping an eye on things to see if maintenance work needs to be done then. And we have, do we have a schedule or anything for any of that work?
Do you have, I don't have anything. Anne, do you have anything about the playground?
Polly keeps an eye on it and and keeps us all informed if there's anything missed.
And does she have like a schedule or she just kind of? Like you said, keeps an eye on it.
Just keep, keeps an eye on it. Like when, there was a piece of equipment that was. That was not functioning when I first came here and she was instrumental in getting that backup together. She was instrumental in getting the, the boat rebuilt. But after that, I know that there's pieces that still need to be put on the slide and the, and the. Steering wheel. And I know that she was, I know she had steering wheel in her hand on. Tuesday when I was there. So things are, things are moving. But I can, I can ask her to, to make a, make a schedule. That would make sense to, so that, so that everybody knows it.
I, I think we have. As far as trees around, there's the, the brown tail in the bushes right there really should be attended to. Soon because you can trim them now without, and they're still in their cocoons, which is a lot easier than pruning it when. The caterpillars are out and spreading. And then with some of the tree maintenance or pruning that should be done with the plants out front. Just like there, at one point I thought there was money put aside for building maintenance or buildings and grounds for that. But it's. It would behoove us with the effort that's been made for some plantings for them to be cared for. And I'm not.
The, one of the ladies who, who put the flowers in came to me last year and said that she was willing to, to prune them. And I said, great, do it. And that was last, it's over. But I'll reach out to her again.
Yeah, well, Tracy, I mean, it's, there, there's a lot going on there.
All right. So I just wanted to start that conversation. So we'll keep thinking about the bus and where we can put that and see if we can start that for the next school year. Anne, is there any warrants?
Uh, yes, there is. And I believe it's on Kristen's desk. I have not had a chance to, to look at it. But if you wanted to sign it and, and then just put it back and she and I can go over it tomorrow.
Okay. So if anyone doesn't have anything else, I would like to. I would like to, I move that the school committee goes into executive session. Pursuiting to M R S A five oh one, oh, four oh five, section six. Did I do that correctly? Okay.
Could tell you don't do that off. Gee, Jeff, second, what? You could tell you don't do.